Good evening and welcome to the May 26 regular monthly board meeting. I would ask you to please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you Chairman Parent. I'd like to say good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll try that again. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That's much better. And welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth Public Schools Board. At this time, we will have the pledge of allegiance and statement. I will read some information on the students as they come. During the pledge, we'll have Lamaya, Lamia Simone Robinson if she would come forward, as well as Makai Najee Holland. And as you come to the podium, let me give the audience a little background information on you. Ms. Flowers, come forward. I don't know if any of the other administrators are present. Mrs. Benton, Mr. Taylor, or the interim assistant principal, Dr. Gregsby. First, Lamaya Simone Robinson. She's an eighth grade student at Craddock Middle School. She's an honor student with a 3.9 GPA. She is a member of the National Junior Honor Society, the school's SCA, and the Admirals' ambassadors. She participates in building Millennium Scholars Program. She plans to attend Churchland High School in the fall and has already begun researching Virginia Commonwealth University as a college prospect. She plans to major in art and literature, two of her passions. She's accompanied tonight by Mrs. Chantel Robertson, her mother, Mr. Tommy Robertson, her father, and Lamika Robertson, her sister. And can we have the parents and rest of the family stand at this time for Lamaya, Lamia? I'm sorry. Thank you. Makai is an eighth grade student at Craddock Middle School. He's an honor student with a 3.24 GPA. He plans to attend Wilson High School in the fall. He has played football and volleyball for Craddock Middle School. He's the president of the Craddock Middle School Student Council Association, SCA. He participates in Man Up, a newly formed mentorship group. He enjoys volunteering in the community. Makai has not decided on a college, however, he plans to major in an academic discipline. He's accompanied tonight by Ms. Cherie Holland, his mother, Ms. Sherry Holland, his grandmother, who is also an instructional assistant at Douglas Park Elementary School. At this time, can we have the family stand and be recognized? Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, School Board members, Dr. Bracy. It is a pleasure that we are here to present before you tonight at this school board meeting. With us, we have Lamia and Makai, two of our dynamic admirals. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Lamia.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, School Board members, Dr. Bracy, special guests. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Makai Holland, Craddock Middle School's SCA president. Thank you for allowing me to present here tonight. It is a pleasure to be here with you. And I am delighted to summarize some of our school's notable accomplishments during my last unforgettable year at Craddock Middle School. Since day one of this school year, I knew I wanted to become more involved. I am very thankful for our SCA because it teaches young leaders like me how important it is to be in a position of leadership. As I once heard, "With great power comes great responsibility." And it's important for young leaders to remember that they are in essence responsible for the people they lead. We accomplished a lot with the trips and activities we participated in this year. My personal favorites were the food bank and working with the Victory Elementary School kindergarteners. The food banks show us how important it is to help the need as much as possible. We helped package different types of non-perishable food and worked in the assorting room, organizing foods, items for distribution to people. Our pen pal mentoring program participants traveled to Victory Elementary School to work with the kindergarten students. It was an amazing experience. We served as role models and it led to more success as our organization earned its spot in the Virginia pilot. We were interviewed again yesterday for a feature about our finished book made with a Victory Elementary School kindergarten class. As students and as young leaders, our journeys to Victory Elementary have really left a positive imprint on us all. We were able to meet with even younger budding leaders about their interests, help them with their lessons, and read books to them. So as a farewell gift to our dear kindergarteners, the SCA collaborated with them in an original children's book to commemorate our time spent together. It contains stories of royalty, adventure, magic, and imagination written by their pen pals. It contains illustrations by a team of our very own Admiral artists. This book was created with happiness and love from both the kindergarteners and our members. On behalf of the children and the members of the SCA, we have provided you with a copy of the finished product, The Amazing Tales from Mrs. Wilson's Class by the Craddock Middle and Victory Elementary Schools Pen Pal Mentoring Program. In addition to the SCA, we have the National Junior Honor Society, the Latin Dance Club, the Gold Stuffers, the Building Millennium School Scholars Program, the Chrome Club, a marching band, the Admiral Ambassadors, a Military Life Group, an award-winning athletic group program, and a host of community sponsors who support our school. There is something for every person who walks through our doors. To sum up my experience at Craddock, I would like to state that the moments we all had together with our weekly meetings in school and our other activities will never be forgotten. I loved my time working with the fellow SCA board members as we believed in, trusted, and also helped guide one another throughout the year. One of my greatest accomplishments as SCA president is being a founding member of the Leadership Institute Program, which promotes leadership development for young men. It is known as MAN UP, which stands for Mastering and Nurturing Unlimited Potential. The group has been featured in the news. Last but not least, I have to say thanks to our parents and our grandparents. Without them, we would not be here. So thank you both, and we really appreciate all that you do for us.
On behalf of the school board, we're very proud of both of you and your leadership ability. And I know that whatever profession that you choose, you're going to be outstanding. You're outstanding students, and we are very grateful for your leadership. Thank you very much. This is just a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Boy, it's refreshing to hear great students. This time, I'd like to give you the mission statement. The mission of Portsmouth Public Schools is to challenge the minds, challenge the bodies, and challenge the dreams of all of our students while focusing on excellence. At this time, our board members, please let be known by your attendance through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Eight members present, one member absent.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is electronic vote. It is the approval of the agenda. What is the board's pleasure? Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Here. Sir? I did. Hearing no discussion, board, please indicate your disposition by electronic vote. And I'll call your attention to 8.3, which I'm just finding out. 8.3, the Addendum to the Employee Transaction Report, May 2016. That has been deleted. So you're voting on that.
Okay. You need to vote.
Ma'am?
You need to vote.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you.
It's unanimous.
All right. Thank you. Next item is presentation, Schools Attendance Report, April 2016. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you Chairman Parent. As you all know, each month, we have attendance report with our schools at each level. And Mr. Wiggins works diligently to crunch those numbers. And as you will see tonight, how detailed he is to the 100th point. So that there aren't any ties. Mr. Wiggins can break it down as far as we need to go to declare winner. So, Mr. Wiggins?
Thank you. And just for the record, since this is being recorded, IT compiles the numbers, but we go over them to make sure that what we present to the board and to the public is correct. We're always one month behind. So the report tonight is for April 2016. The average monthly percentage of student attendance for the school division for last month, and we compare it with the previous year, in 2015, it was 94.60 percent. And for the current year, 94.39 percent. And there was a slight decline of 21 hundredths of a percentage point. The average monthly percentage for our preschools, when we look at 2015, it was 93.53 percent. And for the current year, 92.66 percent. A slight decline of 87 hundredths of a percentage point. Taking first place honors for April, we have Churchland Preschool with 94.04 percent. And coming in second place is Olive Branch Preschool. And when you look at the two schools, the difference separating them is 55 hundredths of a percentage point. We move next to the elementary schools. For last year, 2015, it was 95.66 percent. And for the current year, 95.58 percent. A difference of 8 hundredths of a percentage point. Taking first place honors for last month is Churchland Primary and Intermediate. And we should point out that Churchland Primary and Intermediate has received attendance banner for seven out of the eight months that we have been in school. It compiled a percentage of 97.23 percent. And taking second place honors is Victory Elementary with 96.51 percent. We move next to our middle schools. In 2015, it was 94.91 percent. And for the current year, 93.63 percent. A slight decline of 1 and 28 hundredths percentage points. Taking first place honors, and the principal said that they got it because they were appearing here tonight, is Craddock Middle School, a first-time winner with 93.94 percent. And I have the honor of presenting it to the principal. She refused to fly it until we gave it to her tonight. Taking second place honors is Churchland Middle School. And the principal is here, and she indicated to me prior to this meeting that it will return to her school next month. We like that healthy competition going on. Churchland Middle had 93.85 percent. We move next to the high schools. For 2015, the average was 91.13 percent. And for the current year, 92.32 percent. And we are pleased to report that at the high school level, the attendance went up by 1 and 19 hundredths percentage point. Taking first place honors, and we should point out that Churchland High School has received this singular honor since the program was implemented a few years ago. Churchland High School had 97.31 percent. And taking second place honors is Woodrow Wilson High School with 91.54 percent. And the difference separating the first and second place winner is 5 and 77 hundredths of a percentage point. We have a summary to show you how it has worked. The preschools, the elementary, the middle, the high, and for the school division. And this is merely a summary. And at this time, we would simply like, again, to thank everyone involved in the all-important task of getting students to school so that they can get a high-quality education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. At this time, it's recognition, Citywide Robotics Team. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you Chairman Parent. At this time, we will recognize our Citywide Robotics Team. And if you will look through the screen, you will see a picture of our victorious team. A little background. This team finished significantly ahead in the final rankings for all other Southside Hampton Roads teams. Suffolk's Nazman River High School, Norfolk's Lake Taylor High School, Chesapeake's Hickory High School, and the Governor's STEM Academy housed at Virginia Beach-Lanstown High School. The PPS Royal Robotics Team, number 3359, competed against 37 groups, including those from Chesapeake, the Governor's Schools, Maryland, Norfolk, the private schools, Suffolk, Virginia Beach, and Washington DC. This year's game was called FIRST, First Stronghold, because the teams were of three, worked together to capture their opponent's castle tower using 120-pound robots built in only six weeks. FIRST stands for the following. FIRST, inspirational and recognition in science and technology. Danielle Morgan of Churchland High School and Crystal Whitfield Newton of Woodrow Wilson High School are the coaches who are here tonight. So at this time, can we get the world-renowned team?
All right.
If you all will come forward at this time with your coaches?
Wow. This is awesome, telling you. Says a certificate of recognition presented to the PPS FIRST Robotics Team in special recognition of the team's capturing first-place honors at the FIRST Chesapeake District Central of Virginia event held in Dazwell, Virginia, March 24th, 26th, 2016. And as an acknowledgement of the team's stellar performance, bringing honorable recognition to public schools of Portsmouth, it's signed by the chairman of the school board and Dr. Bracy. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations. There you go. It's awesome. Thank you.
At this time, I will let the coaches say a few words and also introduce the team to us.
Thank you Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, also all school board members, and Dr. Bracy. It's my honor and just thrill to be before you tonight to introduce our Citywide FIRST Robotics Team. Now, I know everyone is pretty much familiar with the team of teamwork, but we were deliberate and intentional in establishing leadership on our team. So as I introduce them, I'm going to introduce them by the roles which they played on the team. And because of their dedication, we were able to work and do the things required of us. So first, I want to introduce the Bill Captains, Ray Smith and Barbara Toussaint. Please stand forward, please. Those are our captains. A robot won't run without programmers. So we need Mr. Hunter Mines and Montavious Gatlin to please stand forward. A robot has to be driven at competitions. So our drive team, Mr. Patrick Mines and Gavin Jeffries, please stand forward. And even before a robot is built with design, we have to design it. And we had two team members who helped us with that. Matt Jeffries and Trey Martin with Computer-Aided Design, have them step forward. And last, but not least, we have another important person who was our tools czar throughout this whole event, which required a lot in our bill room. I want to also introduce Mr. Patrick Winch. We are absolutely honored and we graciously accept this moment with you, a term my team knows quite well. And I also want to thank Ms. Newton who's with us. She's just been a wonderful support. But behind us, we came in three rows behind us. We have a tremendous team behind us. Would all the parents please stand? We also had help from an engineer at Newport News Shipyard, Mr. Lewis Fisher. Would you please stand? And I think I saw her over in the corner over there, Ms. Lauren Nelson. She's our coordinator for Science for the City. Would she please stand? I'd like to recognize her as well for her support with this team. And I'm just greatly honored to be before you. We are so excited to bring honor to our city, and we look forward to continuing. And I want to leave you with our team's motto. I will say it. Royal Robotics, where innovation, inspiration, but most importantly, integrity reigns. Thank you.
I think I asked one of the students if they could build me a robot to clean my house, and I didn't think I got any takers there. That's one of my jobs at home. It would make my life easy. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you Chairman Bridgewater. I just wanted to say and mention real quick, I remember when we had the competition at Churchland High School and the night before, I went up and one of these young gentlemen, I don't want to call out a name because I'll probably get it wrong because that's what happens when you get old. But I remember they were meticulously showing me all the components of the robot and how it's put together and talking in robot language. And I was fascinated, but I couldn't have a conversation because I didn't understand it all. So it's been a pleasure and it's been amazing to watch this program and this team do what they've done over the past couple of years at different competitions. And I've got to hand it to you, and no disrespect, but when I was your age, I can't guarantee that I could have put a model car together in six weeks, much less a whole robot. So job very well done. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Moving along, at this time, we'll have the approval of the minutes, the April 14th, 2016, and the April 21st, 2016 minutes. What is the board's pleasure? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic vote.
Give a light, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
Give a light.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to look at three things at one time.
That's okay. Multitasking.
Yes.
No, I was going to just say that on this item, since they're both together nevertheless, I will be abstaining because the one evening I was out due to illness.
Right. Got you. All right. All right. Board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Seven yes votes, one abstention. It passes.
Thank you. This time, we move on to public comment. This is a public comment on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers?
Yes.
Thank you.
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Ms. Tracy Johnson? Ms. Jaleel Futra?
Good evening to the superintendent, school board members, and citizens of Portsmouth. My name is Jaleel Futra, and I'm in Churchland Middle. And there were rumors that since yesterday, 38 graders were suspended. I think this happened for two reasons. These reasons are because some of us eighth graders and the principal administrators are not involved most of the time. The last assembly we had was in December, and we talked about clothes and keeping our hands to ourselves and et cetera. I think we all need to pitch in to our school because it's just not the student's school, it's everybody's school. Before my SOL, before my reading SOL, my teacher said that the school accreditation was on us, and that made me real... was on us, and that made me feel even nervous about my SOL. On Tuesday, in my civics class, we had a substitute, and one girl had, came in my classroom and told the substitute that she wanted to stay in our class, so she sat down in the classroom and started talking to people. And then, one of those students that was in the classroom came back from the bathroom and started to continue her work. We are going to call this person A. So A was just sitting there doing her work. The girl that came in started to say things about A. She started to say things about her clothes, her shoes, and her sexuality. And this got under my skin because A just sat there helpless because she was scared of the girl. The worst thing about all of this is that the substitute just sat there on her phone, and that's what bothered me the most. So I'm asking you to get our school together by having clothes for bullying and have more trainings to help teachers to learn how to motivate us more, to ask the principal to have at least three assemblies during the school year so that they can ask us what needs to be improved in the school. And if any way, when y'all are talking about budgets, is there any way possible that you can put money toward doors in our bathrooms so that we can use the bathrooms in privacy? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are any additional speakers, you may request permission to speak from the board at this time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Reverend Patel.
I did have one question about this. I guess if Mr. Ziegler could provide us with an update, if it was okay with the chair, on the restroom doors at Churchland Middle, because those should be replaced immediately if they don't have those up and operable.
I will research and get back to the board next minute.
Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the students for coming forward to speak to us on concern, and certainly, we're going to look at those things you suggested because we're very concerned about bullying or any, anything like that. So it takes courage sometimes to come and speak to us, and I just want to thank you for saying what you said today. Thanks.
The next item is public comment, board agenda items. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
Hi, my name is Caitlin Stokes, and I'm a senior at Woodrow Wilson High School.
Hi, my name is Janita Stewart, and I'm also a senior at Woodrow Wilson High School, and we are here today as members of Y Street. As you may know, Y Street is a youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth that focuses on promoting healthy living in Virginia. This year, we are working on a few campaigns, and I'm here to talk about the 24/7 campaign, helping Virginia schools be tobacco-free 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We came a few months ago asking you to consider updating our school's division policy, tobacco policy. If you recall, we asked you to include all property, whether owned, leased, charter, or rented, include any school sponsor or school-related events, whether on or off-site, and to require consequence for visitors, include possession by youth and distribution by all, include nicotine-enhanced products in the definition of tobacco, and remove designated smoking areas. Now, we are pleased to say that you have updated your policy to include all these We are standing in front of you today to say thank you. Thank you for showing that you truly care about what the youth have to say in your division and to what they care about. Thank you for taking the time and effort to respond so quickly and to take action on such an important issue. Finally, thank you for putting the health and safety of your staff, students, and visitors first by doing everything you can to have 100% tobacco-free schools 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We are asking all of you to please vote yes to this very important policy update. Once you decide to adopt a new policy, clearly making your schools 100% comprehensively tobacco-free, we have great ways to show our support. First, we will provide free tobacco-free signage to all schools in your division. Second, we will offer our free tobacco-free toolkit to all schools in your division. Third, we will add you to our map of 100% comprehensive divisions on our handouts and websites. We are asking you to please accept our offer of free signage to your division after you vote yes to this outstanding policy. On behalf of Y Street, thank you for taking the time to speak with us, and we hope you will join us by adopting our 100% tobacco-free division policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question in reference to the previous speaker about the suspensions? Is that, okay. Any tax administration as well? Well, I was just taken back by the rumor you said of 38 graders being suspended from Churchland Middle?
Yes.
And it seems like we would need to look into that because that's a large number of students being suspended in a short period of time, and that's something that, you know, is definitely of concern if that's the case, if the rumor is true. I don't know. I don't know if it's a rumor. Where is she? Where's the principal? Yes. Could you come forward, please?
Do you want Dr. Sten? Oh, okay. All right.
Good evening.
No, there were not 38 graders suspended yesterday.
Okay, were there some that were suspended?
There were some that were suspended yesterday for an incident in a stairwell in order to ensure student safety.
Okay, and how many were?
I can't tell you right off the top of my head. I believe it was between six and eight.
Six to eight?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Seeing no more speakers. All right, moving to curriculum and instruction, monthly report. Dr. Anita Taylor. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Dr. Taylor will come and give the monthly report in curriculum and instruction, and also, under this report, we will also hear our annual report from First College as well. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you. Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy, it's my pleasure to give you the monthly curriculum and instruction report. We are pleased to report that we have quite a number of math teachers who will be serving on the VDOE Mathematics Standards of Learning Content Review Committees this summer. This is a major accomplishment, and it certainly serves us well as those individuals will have firsthand experience on the development of SOL tests and the materials around them. We have Tanya Fields-Hines, Terrica Newby, Stephen Thomas, Diana Martin, India Hatcher, and then we also have two teachers who were selected as alternates, and they are Tiffany Ritchie and Latoya Hurdle Lee. The Office of Science reports that Portsmouth cooperating Hampton Roads Organization for Minorities in Engineering, that's a mouthful, Chrome Club students begin a chapter in their LEGO Robotics Experience, and they engaged in a year-long investigation of the purposeful use of simple machines in efforts to be waste-wise. The Portsmouth Chrome Waste-Wise Competition is a showcase of constructed models of machines for use in recycling, reusing, or repurposing waste. Students were charged to program robotic versions of simple and complex machines and to create a poster display of their research. We had several winners in separate categories, but I'm pleased to announce that we have winners from Hodges Manor, Douglas Park, Lakeview, Parkview, Victory, and West Haven. And then, we had eight students from our three high schools who qualified to present their research papers at the Virginia Junior Academy of Science at Mary Washington University in Fredericksburg. And those students who presented are Carlos White, Luke Negroni-Coker, Taquan Green, Trev O'Hanell, and Tariq Everett from CHS, Jarius Howard, and Cassan Dixon from Norcom, and Michael Golden from Wilson. The following culinary students won scholarships at the Careers Through Culinary Arts, and this was announced at an award ceremony at West Virginia Beach Town Center. From Woodrow Wilson, we had Reese Conwell won a scholarship to the Culinary Institute of Virginia Meatless Monday Scholarship for $9,500. Tashina Jenkins won a ICC Half-Tuition Scholarship to Tidewater International Food Service Executives Association Scholarship, $23,900. And Cordasia Person, the Culinary Institute of Virginia Partial Tuition Scholarship, Tidewater International Food Service Executives Association Scholarship of $9,000. Also, CTE won a Creating Excellence Award for its partnership with Goodwill Industries titled Food Service Training Beyond Sweet. And we have culinary students who participate in Roger Brown's, in internships at Roger Brown's, and learn hiring and interview skills there as well. The Office of Social Studies has been out recruiting students to register to vote. April 24th through the 30th was a statewide high school voter registration week, and we are pleased that we have registered 32 high school students to vote. On Friday, May 6th, the Office of Social Studies hosted the 13th Annual Virginia Studies History Bowl at Woodrow Wilson High School. Hodges Manor won the History Bowl, and Parkview came in second place. We want to send out a special thanks to Reverend Patel and for moderating, and Ms. Duncan Hines, and Lisa Pennington for being judges there. So thank you for that, and Dr. Bracy for presenting the champions with their trophies. So you will notice that there is a sample of student artwork this month in your report. West Haven Elementary Student Mawusi Mensah won first place in the 4th Grade Division of the NASA Langley Research Center Art Contest. The theme for the 2016 art contest was "Conjure Up Visions of the Unknown." His art teacher is Megan Webb. Portsmouth Public Schools has exceeded its quota of 24 students for the Governor's School for the Arts in the 2016-17 school year. This school division has 25 students accepted with representation from each of our high schools, and the breakdown by area is as follows. We have six for dance, seven for music, six for theater, and six for visual arts. So that is quite an accomplishment for our school division. At this time, I will ask Mr. Craig Hill to come forward to give us our annual report for Tidewater Community College, First College, and Career Technical Education and Dual Enrollment
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Greetings, Chairman Parent and school board members, Superintendent Dr. Bracy. It's my pleasure tonight to bring to you the annual report for the First College Dual Enrollment. Joining me tonight is Lisa Harrell, Associate of CTE and First College, along with three of our First College students who you'll hear from later tonight, and also Dean Snyder, representing TCC. What a, what a great, exciting year we had this year. As you know, this was our 11th year completing with over, with 200 students we've expanded to. But with that expansion, we are not stopped. We're not stopping there. We are so excited with all of our future plans to grow the programs with pathways, credentialing, certifications, and even associate's degree. So basically, when we tell you we're excited about the 11th year and 200 students, we realize we've only scratched the surface, and we have so many more things to do and expand with our partnership with TCC. If you notice on the slide and also in your report, we changed things up a little bit this year, and we decided to go with a three-year plan and showing the numbers for the last three years to kind of give you an idea of how we've been growing over the last three years. If you look at the numbers, things have been pretty consistent with the course offerings. The favorite courses for the students seem to be Biology 101. I shouldn't probably say favorite course. Let's just say it's one of them that they choose a lot. And then you have Psychology, Public Speaking, and Sociology. If you notice down there with the SDV 100 course, that is required from TCC, so we don't list that as one of the courses that they choose. But the courses that they have chosen over the last three years have remained pretty consistent with over 150 students picking Public Speaking. Our next slide here is just basically a pie graph showing you that and gives you a little bit more of a feeling of how those classes kind of pan out. We do know that students are wanting more courses to be offered, and we're looking into that, but currently, these have been the courses that have been the most popular. Also, the next one we want to look at is the achievement for First College scholars. If you notice the graph there over the last three years, it's some encouraging numbers. In 2014, we had attempted classes 828, then in 2015, 938, and then in this last year, 985 courses were attempted. And of those courses, 814 are transferable to a college or another institute. So that is very exciting to see that, and our percentages have remained the same from 84, 82, 83% over the last three years. So we're doing something right. We believe the new programs that we implemented, I noticed Dean Snyder was here, of helping students that maybe had a 2.0 average in high school when they came over, we worked with that cohort, and that seemed to help also and help make the classes even more successful for our students. Moving forward, we also have for the GPAs, if you notice. The last three years, the 2.0 are higher. This year, we had 179 students. With academic warning, we dropped down from 28 last year to 11 this year, so we dropped that in half, and that's always a good sign. Again, I believe that it's working with those students, making sure we're on top of it from the beginning all the way through the semester. And then, the academic probation of 1.5 or lower dropped to 10. And then this year, we started, I wanted to give you even more of a breakdown, and we showed the GPAs of 3.5 to 4.0, as 55 students, and then 3.0 to 3.9 is 53, and then you see the rest. So our students are being successful. You know, it's great to have these programs, but if they're not successful, they're just programs. But these programs actually lead somewhere through pathways, credentialing, and hopefully associate's degrees as we plan on expanding. Moving forward, there we go. We showed you the breakdown of our First College Scholars' race and gender. Our numbers are basically consistent, if you notice, over the last three years with the majority of our students being black females, and that's been a consistent number. And then you have white females, and then accordingly, as you notice. Not a big dip in either, in either one of the categories. And as you see, we went from 191 to 200 in our total students. And then, I've given you some graphs, and your personal agenda's there, but this one up here just gives you a graph of the whole population in general of all three schools district-wide, and I believe in your packets you have from each high school. Moving forward, we also wanted to add in this report our dual enrollment numbers, because if you think about it, First College is all grouped in with dual enrollment. And with the, with our plan and vision of the superintendent and assistant superintendent and the school board, we believe that if we expand all of these dual enrollment classes and start having students in the junior year start taking classes, whether it's welding, automotive, going into First College, we can just expand this. It doesn't have to be a program that's only for our seniors in their, spring of their senior year. It can be a program that students get on board earlier in their high school career. And by doing that, we wanted to look at your dual enrollment numbers, and you noticed that we have the marine welding, we have the marine electric, and we have the other programs there that are growing, but we want to continue to grow. And with the welding program, we're going to expand that, where we offer six more courses over their junior and senior year so they can graduate with a certificate and not just have a class where they dip their toes in. We want them to have something when they leave there. We want them to have something when they leave there. Moving on, let's kind of take a moment if we could here, when you think of CTE, unfortunately, a lot of people still call it vocational education. And let's look back, what was vocational education? It was for few students, it was one or two, three, maybe four programs involved with that. It was in lieu of academics. It was a program that maybe students were forced to go to down at the end of the hallway because the guidance counselor didn't know where to put them. Well, now we have Career and Technical Education, and in that program, it is, all students are involved in it. It's a program with all careers, with 16 career clusters that I'm going to show you in a moment, and it aligns and supports academics. Also, it's a high school-college partnership. So, if a student like we have now, if you notice back on the numbers, we had six students that are in the automotive program. That means they went over there and received credits for three and four different classes. So, they're already ready for that pathway to go into automotive, not necessarily going to go through the college track, but they're going to go into the automotive track. We have programs with the apprenticeship that students can graduate after they go through it and make $50,000 a year. Well, that's more money than some starting teachers will make that have a four-year degree and a lot of debt. So, these are programs that we feel like that are very valuable for our students, and we're hoping they can move forward. And if you look at it, 16 career clusters, that is what the state offers, and that's what we are planning on providing for our students. Currently, we have looked at the different career plans, and this is an example of one. And this is our EMT program. Because of staffing problems currently, we do not offer that this, the last couple of years, but that program, a student can graduate from that with their EMT certification and go out and get a job. And that shows you the career pathway. Where does that start? Back in the 7th grade, when they do an academic career plan. So, we're already putting these students, and they know what they need to take once they get up to high school, and then they can go into one of these plans of study. We have them for all of our different career clusters. Currently, we offer the different ones. We have one in accounting. Where over at TCC, we have a program called The Firm that students can go into that and work towards their accounting. We have the early childhood development, as you know, over at Wilson High School, where students can take that class and then go over to TCC and take some more classes and work towards a certificate. So, think about it, a junior goes through our program, and then their senior year, they can go over to TCC and start working on their certificate. We have the horticulture program, and we have also our health professions. With the EMT, we offer also our CNA program at Wilson High School, where students can get their CNA certification and then go right over to TCC and start working on their RN. We also, as you know, approved the sports medicine that will be starting in the fall over at IC Norcom, where students can get their certification there and get their training, become a sports medicine, and go work for a high school team, then go even work for a college team, you know, if they want to, but that is a very valued job, and the growth in that field is just tremendous. So, the personal trainer, we're very excited about that opportunity. And then down at the bottom, if you notice there with the productivity, we have the maritime welding, as I stated before. That's a pathway, we're working with TCC. So, your junior and senior year, a student can receive a certificate, but when they graduate from high school. And then they can go right on over to the shipyard if they choose, or whatever the case may be. And we also have the Megatronics, which is a Marine Electric course that we're offering, and then we're dealing with apprenticeships and pre-apprenticeship programs. And then, over the left, I wanted to also mention again the horticulture program, and I believe we had a couple of students that graduated here recently from Virginia Tech that went through that program. Moving on, we have a new thing that's working with the proposal, it's 2017-18, and this is an associate's and DS with Old Dominion and TCC, where a student can take their 30 credits, if you noticed on the left there, or 32 credits on the left, and take all of those classes their junior and senior year. And then, they graduate from that and go over to ODU to work on their four-year degree, and also work at the shipyard and get all of their apprenticeship hours that are over there on the right. If that gets approved, that's a great opportunity for students, not only to get their apprenticeship, but also to get their associate's degree through TCC while in high school, and then go get their four-year degree. So, that is a proposal that we're working with TCC also. And basically, this shows you all of the different options. And when you look at that slide, I know it seems like a lot of information, just say the word "options" to yourself, and keep saying it, because there is nothing but options on that slide.
Right.
You've got a student that maybe wants to go from high school to go in there, a student from his GED program can go into this, a student that has graduated with an associate's degree with a four-year degree, a student that wants to come back to the program, there's no one that is left off that slide. So, that is a very valuable slide when you look at it in that context. Then we, I wanted to kind of just show you where of all our 2016 First College graduates going, and there are some of the colleges there. And I hopefully that you see some of, maybe some you might have went to. I know Mr. Nottingham over here likes to see one of those up there, the UVA, but we have students going from Yale to UVA to Norfolk State to ODU across the board. And I also want to mention, when I mentioned that slide, that our TCC students, we had in 2014, 25 students that returned to TCC, in 2015, we had 42, and in this year, we have 43 students that are coming back to TCC. So, that door and pathway is open also. So, not everyone is going to the four-year, they're coming back to TCC. Moving forward, some comments that some of the students said basically on there. You know, when you, when Dr. Taylor told me to do this report, I realized it's a lot of data that I had to gather, and it was, you know, some sleepless nights and all of those things that Mr. Wiggins could probably tell you, you know, I was up stressing, I didn't want to, you know, Dr. Bracy not to be happy with the report. But this was one slide I was glad to do, because I got to pick the comments. And the comments were all pretty good, to be honest. Most of the students were very excited about their experience, they said it gave them a leg up on it, they gave them the college feel, and you're getting ready to hear from three of our bright students tonight. And guess what, those two ladies that just came up here with the tobacco freezer, they're First College students. So, that just tells you the wide range of students that we have in this program. But one of the things that did pop out, they want more variety of courses being offered, okay? And if I'm not mistaken, I think we talked about that at the summer retreat, and everybody was saying, we want to offer more things. So, everybody's on board with that, the students are yelling that, and so we're going to expand that, and that's what TCC wants to do also. So, that was the main, the main thing that was the negative side of it. I think there's one thing there, they said that I was, I did a real good job, and, but another student on there actually said that we were helpful, but after they got over there a couple of weeks, they never really saw us, they didn't really have to come to us. So, that shows you that they could just expand and do what they had to do, and that's exciting. And our next slide here, we wanted to give you a few pictures of just the experience over there. This was our four-week part, and it was right near the Super Bowl, so we had a little celebration of four weeks in, we threw a little Super Bowl activity over there, and the students really bonded, and it was a good way to give them the experience of the coming together of all three high schools, because we want to be known as the First College program, and they kind of leave their, you know, the Greyhounds, the truckers, and the presidents kind of aside a little bit when they get over there to that program, and that's exciting. This, with some students that had straight A's, and at the end of the program, we had 20 students that had straight A's, and I can tell you, we had so many that only had one B and always, that is, I know they're still kicking themselves. But this was some of our students that were in the program, and they were very excited about it. Now, when you get into First College, everybody says, well, what happens with the high school activities? Guess what happens? They still win basketball championships, and they're on that team, they're winning track meets and winning and getting in a paper for doing extounding things on the track field. We have students coming up here presenting to you, so they're partaking in all of those activities, they don't miss a beat. And they also do prom proposals. This young man right here did his prom proposal right in our office, we helped him hide the card there, and he did that, and look what they look like at their prom. I tell you, they look like they were in a GQ magazine, don't they? Our students clean up well, I'll tell you. So, that was an exciting time for us, and so it's just part of it. It was like being a principal of 200 students over there, and you really, you know, bond with them all. Finally, you know, you've heard from me now, but it's nothing like hearing from the students that actually were in the program, and I have three of our students, and I could have picked any of the 200 students that came up here. These were the ones that just yelled at me the loudest, and, no, these are the ones that I bugged the most. And I have three students, we're going to start off with Juliette Wallace, and then we're going to have Evan speak, and then we'll finish up with Kayla. So, I'm going to turn over to them and let them start. Juliette?
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Dr. Bracy, members of the school board, and everyone here tonight. I'm Juliette Wallace, and I'm a 2016 graduate of Churchland High School, and I'll be attending Yale in the fall. The First College program directly enabled not only me, but my peers to garner the skills and resources necessary to excel in a competitive collegiate environment. Coming out of Churchland High School, for me, I know that I had a ton of support and so many resources, and everyone was in my corner, but going to First College really proved that, not only for me, but everyone else, had the same exact chance to succeed and excel. I couldn't be more grateful for Mr. Hill and Ms. Harrell and all of my professors who really guided me through everything. I actually left TCC for a month to go tour schools in the Northeast, and everyone was entirely flexible and excited for me, and genuinely passionate about what they do. While I was at Tidewater, I took an introductory course in Biology, Sociology, Calculus II, the required SDV course, and a second year of World Civilizations, and my classes were phenomenal. I had taken AP at Churchland, I'm very familiar with a rigorous collegiate or pre-collegiate environment and academics, but the TCC environment sort of enables you to not only get the material, but to get the experience. You're on a campus, you're driving out, you're not taking classes from 8:00 AM until 2:10, you're pretty much relying on yourself to get the work done, to go to the library when you need to, to communicate with your classmates, and the experience is truly unbelievably valuable. You get so much interaction, student to teacher, that I don't know if you necessarily would get at a major institution, and I doubt I'll get at Yale in my four years, but to have this, to fall back on this confidence, it's truly something that I could not be more thankful for, and I know my peers feel the exact same way. It was a great semester, a ton of fun, it enabled us to have the freedom to continue with our sports. A lot of my friends are on the soccer team, I swim for the varsity team at Churchland, and we were able to continue doing the things we love while also getting this education. And I want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity.
Wonderful.
Good evening, Chair, Parent, members of the Portsmouth School Board, Dr. Bracy, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Evan Cox, and I am a June 2016 graduate from IC Norcom High School. While at TCC, I took Sociology, Psychology, History II, and Public Speaking. I finished my courses with a 3.6, and I made on, made the Dean's List. TCC was a bit hectic when people, that's why I tell people when they ask me, how was TCC? But, because we're high schoolers going into an environment that's not familiar to us, but we have so much help from the administration and from our professors, so we're successful in them. I plan to attend VCE in the fall and major in History and Theater, and my goal is to become an actor. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to participate in First College.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, members of the Portsmouth School Board, Dr. Bracy, and ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
I was going to have to make a move to get a more joyous, good evening. My name is Caleb Edwards, and I am a Churchland trucker who will proudly be walking the stage June 7th, just in a couple of weeks. I participated in the First College program and took the following courses: World Civilization, Humanities, Public Speaking, and Sociology, where I had an outstanding time with the coursework, the teachers, and the students that were in the classes, in my classes, excuse me. The First College experience on a scale of 1 to 10, I would give it an 11 out of 10. The social environment was phenomenal. I had not had the opportunity, or as great of an opportunity, to meet students from Norcom and Wilson High Schools, and people from Portsmouth and Norfolk and wherever they came from to study at TCC. The social factor was amazing, like I said. The academics, they were rigorous, like Juliette said, although if you're the type of student who likes to excel, who is competitive, and who doesn't mind a little push from the teachers, their parents, and their peers, you would do just fine like we have. Also, I want to give credit to Mr. Hill here and Ms. Harrell for being such outstanding coordinators and sort of mentors for us First College students. They really did help us keep our head on our shoulders, they guided us, and they made sure that if we were having a problem, they're here for us to talk to, along with the other teachers at Tidewater Community College. While at First College, I didn't feel like I was away from Churchland. I'm, I was captain of the tennis team, I was a member of the Student Council Association, as well as a number of other organizations at Churchland High School, and there was never a lack of involvement. The announcements from Churchland High School were brought over or emailed to Ms. Harrell, where she did an outstanding job of relaying those messages to us, and my only regret would be that more students from Churchland did not take advantage of this phenomenal opportunity. My plans after graduation are to go to Howard University. Now, I'm not saying Howard is not, well, I'm not saying Hampton's not the real H U, but you see where I'm going from here.
Right.
So, I'll be going to Howard University, where I'll be studying Political Science as my major and Biology as my minor. And finally, I would like to express my thanks to the school board and Dr. Bracy for allowing me and my peers to have such a great time at First, in the First College program. Thank you, and thank you.
I think we should stand up. Good job. Well done, well done. Very good.
Let me give you a little bit of Caleb right before he leaves here. I had to pick one student from Churchland who was going to be the First College student, and I picked him, and, but we kind of had a shaky beginning. He came in with his mom the week before and said, I don't like my classes. I don't see why I'm taking Sociology, Psychology, and these, they sound too much alike, and I don't understand why I'm going to have to take these, and I don't understand the experience here. And I had explained to him and his mom, I said, well, you know, these are different classes, and once you get over here, you're going to realize, and it's very important to your whole academic career. And he was like, you know, he was looking. So, at that moment, he left my office, I was thinking to myself, this can go left or this can go right with this student right here, you know? And about a week later, he comes to my office, he says, you're right.
You're right.
Those classes are awesome, I like it. And he would come in about every week, and I'd, let me tell you what we're doing in history, let me tell you what we're doing. I understand why psychology and sociology is different, so I, you know, he became almost like the dean's pet in a way, you know what I mean? You know, we still have those when I was a teacher, so I'm very thankful to have all of these students and Evan and just everybody. Thank you again. To close out, I want to thank everyone, I want to thank the school board for this opportunity, I want to thank Dr. Bracy and Dr. Taylor for putting this program underneath of me this year. It's been an excitement, it's just, just, just exciting. You know, when you take on a new project, it's always exciting, and this project just gave me even more life. And it's a lot of responsibility with CTE, but when you blend them both together, there is even more opportunities, and thank you to the board. I would like to thank Ms. Harrell again, and Provost Woodhouse, and everyone over there at TCC, that has been an awesome experience for me. And Dean Snyder is also here, if you would stand, please. She really helps with the students and makes sure. Again, thank you all, and if you have any questions or concerns.
Yes. Reverend Patillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hill, thank you for doing a phenomenal job with our students, and I want to again congratulate the three students that came forward, and you are an example for more students to come behind you. I also just want to ask a couple of questions, Mr. Hill, for the students that are participating in First College.
Yes, sir.
Between the three high schools, I see that Churchland and Wilson have, they have a pretty good stride as far as the increase in students every year.
Right.
And I'm not sure if maybe the UNO or the administrators of the schools have a particular program they're using to push it onto their students to go into the First College program, and how they could share that maybe across the district with Norcom.
Well, I know that, you know, this program, even though we're ending with the report, it's starting back next week, and I'm going to the three high schools with some of these same students to talk to juniors that are looking at the program, and we have a, we'll go over to Norcom Friday and talk to those juniors, and we do the same thing with Churchland and Wilson. But I think it begins even earlier than that with our guidance counselors, and making sure they're letting these students know and be aware of these programs out there. And the more we can get the awareness out there and they see how successful it is, I think we can get more students. As a former teacher and coach over at IC Norcom, I would like to see those numbers go up. I just think, you know, we have the students there, they should be over here. Evan is a good example of that. And we also had, where Piceup came and did an interview of three of our students also, and we're going to try to promote that using that, the video, and just try to do everything we can socially, as far as meter. We started the Twitter account this, this year with First College to try to get the word out, so we just need to do more and keep doing more and getting the word out.
And just for the, for my clarification, what are the prerequisites or requirements for students to?
Yeah, they have to, they have to get through the English 11 and English 112 in the fall and take that, and they've been pretty successful, and if you notice on that dual enrollment chart, there are all the English 111 classes, that's what pops out there. They can also take They can also take the social studies courses, and they can pass that. But basically, it's that the English 111 and 112, that's the parameter. If they can get through that, we're okay, you know. They go through the process with the guidance counselors, and they put an application, and then they, you know, the placement test, and all of those things they have to go through. So it's not that it's a tough process, I think. I think sometimes students don't think they can be successful, to be honest, and they don't know if they want to try to step out of their comfort zone and try this experience. But if they do, I think they'll find they will be successful.
Okay, and it's possible, I'm not sure if that'd be for you or for Dr. Taylor, but in the near future, maybe at the retreat, could we get like the process, I guess, that
students go through with guidance as far as, you know, how they offer the program to
them and for GED or diploma recipients, how they can get into certification programs? And I guess, do they have like a meeting schedule where they meet with these students?
Right, and I'm not sure of that myself, so I'll get with maybe Dr. Shepherd and the guidance and see what they're doing with that.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hill. I think it's a wonderful program. My daughter went through and recently finished with courses in First College as well. And thank you for the students that came out this evening to speak. It was very inspiring. And I think I have a similar concern as Reverend Patillo. Last year, I brought up the issue that if you look at the statistics, that you have a relatively small percentage of African-American males in particular who are participating in the program. And this year, it was 18%. I can't remember what it was last year, but it was also relatively small compared to black females, which was 42%. So in terms of the awareness piece, to make students aware is one thing, but I think to have something more structured in place where you get them to actually sign up for the program is something very different. And I think that's what we need. We have to recognize that we still have a lot of students who will be first-time college students in their family's history. And it's a very, sometimes daunting experience in terms of signing up and taking the classes. So just making them aware, I think, is not gonna be enough. We need something more structured in place with guidance. And especially at Norcom, for some reason, that's not happening. And I saw that Wilson increased their numbers, but Norcom has not, and that's a concern for me.
Yes, ma'am. I saw the numbers too, and I agree. And I think, like I said, we just need to get with maybe guidance and see what they're doing as far as trying to recruit them in there. And I like the idea of letting them sign up and just getting them right in there and follow them all along the ninth, 10th, 11th grade.
And I think, I mean, if you can identify what students are eligible and, you know, have something more structured so that they, you know, sign up for the classes or sign up for First College, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Parent. I am just so impressed with the students that came tonight to speak. And the universities that they're going to, Yale, Howard, and VCU, very impressed. So whenever our students come back and can talk the way that they spoke with us tonight about their experience, is well worth our investment. And we are getting an amazing return on our investment. I do want to ask the name of the young lady that spoke. I have Evan Cox, IC Norcom, Caleb Edwards, Churchland, who is Sarah, my link sister, I know them very well. And I need the young lady for, that's going to Yale, because I do Facebook, and I want to post them as soon as I get home.
Juliet Wallace.
Juliet Wallace.
Yes, ma'am. And I figured if I had these three students come, no matter what I set up here, they would want to make me look good.
Oh, yes.
I figured that was good.
Very impressive, and again, thank you all so much, and I certainly wish you the best, and I know you will do well. Just come back to Portsmouth and bring your gifts and talents here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Hines?
Thank you. There we go. Good evening. As I'm looking, I think I'm getting myself confused, so just please straighten me out.
Okay.
I'm looking at the 13 to 16 dual enrollment.
Yes, ma'am.
AutoCAD, English 111, English 112, Government 211, 212, Marine Electric and Marine Welding.
Okay, I'm there.
Okay. IC, English 111 Fall, English 112 Fall. Are these not offered Fall/Spring, Fall/Spring?
That's correct. They're only offered in the fall.
So what are we doing in the spring?
They're in the First College program. So we're not offering any, that's what we're trying to expand now and try to.
Got it. Okay.
Yep.
Made the connection. Thank you very much.
That's all right.
And the other thing you mentioned with the proposed AAS and Bachelor Pathway for 17-18, you mentioned the shipyard. So have we, we're working on our partnership with the shipyard, and they will eventually be a partner with us and TCC with this as well?
Yes, there's actually a big group that's been meeting the last six months. TCC is spearheading this whole program, and all the area school systems are involved also. So we're pushing this with all the industry, and they come together and have the shipyards that write, basically, sign off on this. So we're very excited about this.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. And this question could be to you, Mr. Hill, and probably Dr. Bracy. What did I say, Bridgeford?
Yes, that's okay.
I'm old, sorry. Chairman Parent.
That's okay.
With the changes that's coming down from the General Assembly, especially for the year 2018, of how and what high school's gonna look like, because we are going more into the whole, giving students options with regards to if they do want to go into more of that VOTEC slash CTE, college preparatory and so forth, how is this going to, how is this going to change or affect, say, the College First program and the CTE program? And not necessarily in a negative way, but, I mean, how are we starting to have that conversation of what that's gonna look like for us? Or?
Well, basically, we're looking, we're just looking at expanding this whole program. If they want to, they'll start off in their home schools with a CTE program. You still need those in-house programs like culinary, horticulture, hotel, you know, the childcare program, the CNA. Some students are just wanting to stay there, and that kind of gets them to wet their whistle, so to speak. And then with our new programs expanding with TCC, they'll start coming on over. It's almost like TCC is the fourth high school. It's just part of that circle where they can come over here.
It sounds like it.
Yes, and they can come right over here and get their credits for if they want to go on a career pathway for welding, if they want to go into an EMT, nursing, whatever the case may be. It's just expanding their options. And when you expand a student's option, guess what they do? They stay in school. So then you have one-time graduation is gonna go up because they're motivated, because they're realizing there's an end here, and then they're saving money, and there are opportunities out there. So it's all value-added.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hines?
Thank you, I'm sorry. I flipped my page and lost the rest of my questions. But talking about accessibility to students and how to increase participation, the question I wrote down, you talked about the, and you said placement test, I'm assuming it's the VPT.
Right.
Do they get multiple attempts at that, or is it a one-and-done? And when, and when do they take it? I mean, are they taking it in ninth grade, and that's determining, you know, their 11th and 12th grade? Or is it taken at the end of sophomore, and when you only get one shot at it?
No, they have other opportunities. Usually, they're trying to get those juniors to take it, you know, maybe either fall or spring year. They can even take it sometimes up to the summer before their senior year to try to get into the program. Does high schools give them multiple opportunities to take it? They can come over on campus, they come to the schools, TCC and the high schools work together on that. If Dr. Shepherd was here, she might be able to elaborate a little bit more on that, but I know they do have opportunities to take it.
I just wanted to make sure that there are multiple attempts.
Yes, yes.
You know, most of the assessments that we give now, whether it's SOLs or ACT or SAT, all those, you can do multiple attempts to get there. Do we talk about First College when we do our seventh-grade career plan? Are we talking about it then so that we're planning eight, nine, and 10 to get there?
Yes, ma'am. That's what, and again, I wish Dr. Shepherd was here, she could tell you more. But that was the whole idea when they did those academic career plans that the state mandated. So students had an idea of the career pathway. So if they want to go into a particular pathway, let's say they want to become an EMT, then we can look down and say, "Hey, you need to go and follow this pathway for the TCC." You know, you have some students that know when they're three years old from their parents, they're gonna go to college, a four-year degree, okay? We know that. But then you have other students that aren't sure what they want to go into. So by doing this academic career plan, they also do the Virginia Wizard, which is an assessment to kind of show some interest. And then we have them redo that again in the ninth grade, because, you know, I don't know what I want to do when I grow up still. So the students are changing their mind constantly. And then we also can now offer that assessment again in the 11th grade. So these career pathways, while important in academic career plans, they are not rigid, they are flexible, and they can bend and change. But we are getting the message out to them in the middle school. That's where you need to grab, even the career awareness needs to be down in the elementary schools, as you know, get them even earlier. So, yeah, it's all about the awareness, and like Dr. Whitaker was saying, we need to also make sure that we are grabbing those students and making sure that we know who they are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, I just have one last question in reference to the test that Ms. Hines brought up. Why is it that students have to pass that test to get into the program? Because there are some students who may not pass the test, but do go on to college and do very well.
It's a, that's a TCC where they have to have that placement test to get into the TCC program for the dual enrollment classes. That's, and also, it shows them what math level they might be at, you know, as far as the math, but that English 111 and English 112 is the requirement. I think they found out that for students to be successful in that program, they have to at least get that, that level.
I think she, the dean is coming.
Dean Snyder can really address this.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We'd like to, again, just say how much we enjoy our partnership. And sure, I'll be happy to answer a couple of things. The Virginia Placement Test, students are allowed to take it twice within one calendar year, so two times within 365 days. We do have some students that are taking it as early as ninth-grade year right now if they want to begin in these pathways and work towards their associate's degree. Mr. Hill was correct, though, most students are taking it their junior year. The Virginia Placement Test actually does determine if a student is college-ready to take English or math, college-ready. So we actually have three separate categories when we test our students in the high schools. They are either deemed eligible for our transfer-level courses, which includes English 111 and English 112, which are the prerequisites. They need to earn a C or higher to be able to attend First College. They can also be deemed eligible for our career and technical programs that may require a lower-level math class or a lower-level English class. And then we do have some students that do not meet the eligibility requirements. And so we communicate that information back and forth. We also do go out to the high schools, and we provide students with information about how to prepare to take the Virginia Placement Test, because the reality is they do need to think about it and prepare for that test and be ready to take them.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank you, Dean Snyder.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, the next item is the approval of the Memorandum Understanding the Correction Action Plan. What is the board's pleasure?
May I have approval?
Second.
Motion's made, and second, is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Board, please indicate your disposition, electronic vote. Madam Clark?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Moving right along to Human Resources, Operation, Monthly Report, Mr. Scott Ziegler. Dr. Bracy?
Yes, Mr. Ziegler, you will go ahead and give us an update on HR and operations at this time, please.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, you all seem to give me the hardest act to follow every single board meeting.
But I'm happy to present the HR and Operations Report for this month. We are very proud that our HR specialists and our HR senior supervisor are making the school division and our department look very good out and about in our professional organizations. Not only are they attending events, senior supervisors Jessica Duran and HR specialist Crystal Satchel will serve on the planning committee for our next statewide professional conference to be held in November 2016. That's with our VASP conference. Also, HR specialist Crystal Satchel has been selected as the only regional HR representative to serve on the Virginia Wesleyan College Master of Arts in Education in Secondary Education Advisory Panel. This panel will help Virginia Wesleyan in developing a master's degree program in education from the ground up. So we are very happy to have her there. In operations, there is an update on the CSEP classroom demolition and construction at SH Clark Center. And if you go over there, you will see right now it is buried in about three feet of concrete because the room they are converting was a former choir room that had concrete risers built in the back of the room. So there are jackhammers and bobcats and all kinds of dust going around the back of SH Clark. We also have an update for you on locker replacements at Churchland High School, Woodrow Wilson High School, and IC Norcom High School. And also scheduled for lockers this summer is Craddock Middle School. And those are all scheduled to be completed by the end of July, if all deliveries and installation take effect on time. In transportation, we would like to wish luck to Peggy Wilson, who will represent Portsmouth Public Schools at the State Rodeo Competition on June 20th at James River High School in Richmond, Virginia. And we're hoping that she's gonna bring back lots of accolades and a really big trophy. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Reverend Patillo?
Thank you. Mrs. Ziegler, this might be for Mr. Shepherd more than you, but do you know any updates on Wi-Fi for SH Clark?
I do not have any updates. I think Dean would probably be better able to serve that, but I will email him tomorrow.
Okay.
And if he's not here next month, I'll have an answer for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Hines?
Thank you. Two quick questions. Good evening, and I think you do have the hardest act to follow. What is the paint schedule? What is the maintenance schedule for the summer? Because I know some of our buildings, do we have one? Is there one in place?
There is not one in place. However, Mr. Robinson and I talked about that last week, and we are meeting very shortly to start developing a summer maintenance schedule. He and I independently just attended a webinar on strategic maintenance planning and strategic obsolescence planning. And he and I agree that these plans have been missing from our strategic outlook and that they need to be there. So the first step in that very early, next month and into the early parts of the summer, will be to inventory our buildings and see what maintenance is critical and what needs to happen first. And then we will develop a comprehensive schedule in order to put that in place and also begin allocating funds for that. Because we don't have a painting craftsman on staff, we will have to contract that out, and so that will mean we have to take bids and look for MWB-compliant contractors and folks that can provide us a good price for that service. So that's an excellent question, and we are looking at not only painting, but things like the bathroom doors that were brought up tonight, things that may have been put off that really need to be replaced on a regular schedule and need to take priority. So hopefully, we don't meet in July, but we should certainly have updates for that at the retreat in August.
Because many, many moons ago, you know, it was a five-year rotation, and I remember packing up rooms and having to have it all done, and I hadn't heard anything about it. And when you talk about classrooms and you talk about the research of a well-lit and a well-maintained classroom, you know, it just creates for a better environment for our students. So I look forward to having that and seeing where our critical needs are and where we can start. The other piece, it's gonna sound cosmetic and maybe a little girly, maybe, but the flower beds at our buildings. I know that we get grass cut, but when we have bushes that are three times as tall as the preschoolers that are walking in that door, and we have, you know, it's just unkept. And so I'm just looking at the overall picture, especially as we move into the summer, and with everybody coming back in September, you want a pretty manicured place.
Absolutely, and Dr. Taylor buzzes my ears often about landscaping as well. So it's a very good question. Let me start with some good news. Currently, and plan to be finished up by Monday or Tuesday of next week, depending depending on when the landscapers work, I.C. Norcom High School is going to be completely re-landscaped in their beds. The junipers that were in there were overrun, they're being torn out. They started yesterday. And they will be torn out by the end of the weekend and replaced with crepe myrtles. I forget all the different, lots of lovely plants. And that's going to cut down on feral cats around I.C. Norcom High School and also around homeless encampments around I.C. Norcom High School. So we're excited to have that done. There is some background information here, and I don't want to get in too much detail because I haven't prepared a formal report for you. But landscaping is handled by a city bid and a city-awarded contract. So it makes it difficult for us. We put in the parameters for which we want done, and that includes cutting cycles, weeding cycles, and trimming cycles. There was an issue where the city contract was about to expire, and there was concern whether there was going to be money left in the contract to complete this fiscal year cutting cycle. So there was actually an addendum done to the contract to cover ten cutting cycles between April and June. And there was some overlap in there where cutting cycles were skipped. So I know right now everything is getting a little overrun. That went into place May 1st, I think, is when they started recutting again. So they may still be playing catch-up on some things. But one of the things we're going to be encouraging our head custodians to do is start putting in work orders for those things like overgrown beds so that we know about them. And if you have specific examples, please email them to me, and I'll follow up on those specifics.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving along is the, excuse me, the Employee Transaction Report, May 2016. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made, and second, do I hear any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board, please indicate your pleasure by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Moving right along to Budget and Planning. Monthly Report, Planning, Budget and Planning. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Mr. George will come at this time and give us an update on our budget and planning.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, School Board members, Dr. Bracy. It's my pleasure to provide you all with the finance, Budget and Finance Monthly Report. Before I share my item, I just want to go on public record myself and say that I am very proud of the students that we have here at Portsmouth Public Schools. And they really, you know, remind you of why you come to work for our school system. So I just wanted to make sure I said that.
Absolutely, very good.
But I have a very short report for you. Recently, I purchased an office cosponsored with the City of Portsmouth and the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce, a business opportunity summit. This was held at the Renaissance Portsmouth Hotel on April 28th. And this summit afforded MWBE businesses the opportunity to learn about procurement opportunities. Also, within this summit, they were provided MWBE certification and financing information. There were over 102 small business owners that attended the event. More detail will be provided in the quarterly MWBE report as well. But I just wanted to provide that information. And that concludes the monthly Budget and Finance Report.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along to the next item is, excuse me, is the lunch price increase.
During tonight's work session, detailed information was provided by our Food Service Coordinator concerning the lunch price required increase in accordance with the federal statutes.
Right. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote.
All right, Kathy, I'm trying. All right.
Got it.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Moving right along, purchasing contract number RFP 868-P-1516 for Physician Services.
This reference, RFP, was issued for Physician Services on behalf of the PPS Health Services Department. Two proposals were received and evaluated from Get Real Health Care and Tailor Made Diagnostic Incorporated. Current Physician Services contract is expected to expire on June 30th. Both companies were deemed compliant with the school board's MWBE policy, and as such, they were considered for the contract award. The RFP Evaluation Committee recommends the award to Get Real Health Care LLC. Get Real, Get Real Health Care submitted a completed MWBE Form C that certified their intent to perform the work without subcontracting. As such, it is recommended that a contract be awarded to Get Real Health Care LLC to provide physician services to Portsmouth Public Schools. This will be a two-year term contract of $30,000 with three one-year renewal options.
Okay, what is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Please make your action made by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Moving right along, approval to utilize School Board of Orange County, Florida, Cooperative Contract Number RFP 1308184 with Reliance Communication.
Administration recommends the use of the School Board of Orange County, Florida, Cooperative Contract with Reliance Communication, also doing business as School Messenger to provide fully-hosted, time-sensitive mask notification system. Use of this contract is considered advantageous because it integrates with our Sharp School Web System. The total annual estimated cost is $26,250, and this is considered fair and reasonable based on the negotiated contract pricing. The Purchasing Office conducted a search in the Virginia Small Business and Supplier Diversity System for all certified MWBE businesses. There were ten that were identified. Most of the MWBEs did not respond to emails or telephone calls. Others did not provide mass notification systems, or they did not have the capability for the capacity that we have here at the school system. Transformation Consulting has reviewed the cooperative contract documents and deems it to be compliant with the MWBE policy. They also did recommend Portsmouth Public Schools to stay in contact with these companies in an effort to afford ample opportunities for participation. It is recommended that approval be granted to use this cooperative contract with School Messenger to purchase a fully-hosted ASP time-sensitive mask notification system and services. This will be an initial term of three years for a total amount of $78,750.
Thank you. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your disposition by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Moving right along, yes?
I'm sorry, I tried to get it and hit it.
All right, go ahead.
Ms. George, quick question. We're using a cooperative contract from another school division, correct?
Yes.
Are our contracts that we do available for other school divisions to piggyback on? And the reason I ask is because we all know people, and another school division was looking for lockers. And I said, well, we've just done a bunch of lockers, we have a contract for that. When said person called to inquire about our contract, they were told our contacts, our contracts were non-cooperative. Why?
I will have to refer that to the purchasing manager, based on the content of the question.
And the reason I ask is because if we want to give opportunities for our entrepreneurs as we go through transformation to make sure that we are being inclusive, I would think that it might be advantageous for us to have cooperative language in our contracts so that they're afforded that connection the way that we have just connected with Florida. Thoughts?
Yes, good evening. The BPPA, the Virginia Public Procurement Act, requires others to utilize our contract if we include cooperative language in the RFP or the solicitation. So if there is cooperative language in the RFP, then yes, others can utilize our contract.
So is that a, is that a normal practice, that we put cooperative language in there?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'll check my sources, and if I have anything further, I'll, I'll contact you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving right along, the electronic vote, the Financial Budget Report, April 2016. Ms. George?
For the month of April 2016, our general fund revenues received to date are approximately 80%. This is in line with the amount of revenue that we received for the previous year. When it comes to our general fund expenditures, we have spent almost 76% of the revenue that has come in. Compared to last year, we spent almost 72%. So our spending is increasing since the previous year. When it comes to the grant fund, we've spent an amount of $12 million to date for April. General fund revenues are approximately $10 million. With grant expenditures, you always incur them first, and then you submit for reimbursement. So that's why you see a difference between expenditures and revenue. That's also the same for the cafeteria fund. Our expenditures were almost $6 million as of April, while our cafeteria fund revenue was around $5.4 million. Our textbook fund expenditures totaled approximately $800,000, while the revenue for the textbook fund was approximately $825,000. Then when it comes to our internal service funds, for our risk management fund, our workers' comp claims are below what we projected them to be at $538,000. And our healthcare expenses are below what our projection was at around $16 million.
Okay. Under Financial Report, what is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? I have one question. When we deliver, Kathy, or we deliver the Budget Financial Report to the city council members, have you had any feedback? Any of the months that they have obtained copies?
No, I haven't received any feedback.
Dr. Bracy, have you received any, any questions or anything about our financial report? Okay, fine, I was just wondering, thank you. All right. At this time, board members, please indicate your preference by, through electronic vote. Madam Clark?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Moving along, Superintendent's Report, Certain School Board Policies. Dr. Bracy?
All right, Chairman Parent. You all remember, last month, we had the discussion on school board policies, where the Policy Committee convened and went over the policies, and that was shared with the board at the work session. So unless there are any other questions, this up here for approval.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I did have one thing. In reviewing the policies between then and now, there is one in here about FMLA that talks about if you are in the military, and I'm looking for the exact wordage, that you have to make contact every four weeks to keep your intent to return viable. I guess to, to, to check in every four weeks. With us being such a military town, and when deployments go underway, there is often silence, there is often no radio chatter. How are we going to expect our military men and women to check in every four weeks? I just, I'm confused because not every deployment is going to allow that.
Absolutely. And that policy, let me just say, was reviewed by our compliance officer, Letitia Russell, before it was submitted in your packets. There is an exception in the law for just cause or when unable to. And I think this, and I don't have the policy in front of me, so I'm going from memory. I think you're probably referring to those components of FMLA that refer to not active, not being called to active duty because that wouldn't, that would come under military leave. But I think you're referring to family leave, where there are certain instances where they get a certain amount of time related to deployments or related to certain military functions. They don't get time as a family member to travel with the military member on deployment, only to assist with deployment both before and after, and also to attend certain military honors ceremonies or to, or to attend to an injured service member. But that would, there's kind of overlap for that.
I just want to make sure that our servicemen and women are protected.
Absolutely.
And to make sure that they don't have to check in every, every four weeks. Because in some places, it's going to be a family, thank you very much. Thank you, I just wanted to double check.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Lamb?
Chairman Parent, yes, that was my same question, too. In fact, that is found in the policy G-C-B-E on page three, where it does say, "Employees on FMLA leave must report their status and intention regarding returning to work to the school division at least every four weeks." And under the same letters, Family Medical Leave Act, which starts at the, well, page one of that, has all the listings of those different categories with what Ms. Hines was talking about. And I kind of had the same questions, too, because at least I didn't pick up on that there was a clause or a differentiation in there that would allow for, for that.
A paper copy I could, I could borrow.
Here, sir.
And if Mr. Lamb or Ms. Duncan Hines, if you could tell me what page you're referring on?
That would be under the file category G-C-B-E.
I have that, yes.
Okay, page. If you turn to the very beginning, the first page of that, it starts out with your definitions covered, active duty, service member, and so forth. And then it goes through, and then you come over to page three. And right towards the middle of the page, it says, "Employees on FMLA leave must report their status and intention regarding returning to work to the school division at least every four weeks."
Now, that, that was a miss. Let me defer to Mr. Meekins. I don't think we need that in there if the board would like to adopt it with it deleted. There are certain, there are certain times, according to FMLA, when we can ask for an update or a return status. Now, if that's talking about individual leave, but that, and let me see.
Go ahead.
Page three, yes. That, that would not be a requirement. That's not a requirement that we have now. There are times, depending on if the leave is intermittent or if the leave is continuous, of when we can ask for updates on the return status. And that largely has to do with when it's an indeterminate amount of leave that they're requesting. No, it's, this is in general here, it's not applying to the military.
Different provisions of this policy, that specifically addressed the obligations of the military and the spouse. That would not be a requirement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Reverend Patillo, did you want to speak? You're okay? All right, board members, you have had a copy of these policies. What is your pleasure?
Second.
Motion's been made, and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Moving on, the final School Board Operating Budget. Dr. Bracy?
Yes, Chairman Parent. At this agenda item, as you all know, we've been working for the past four, five months with this as an agenda item. with this as an agenda item, going through and looking at our priorities, identifying those. And with that, we've come up with this year's budget for approval for tonight for '16-'17 school year. So we were asking for approval of the budget at this time.
Okay. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made, and properly second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Six yes votes, two no. It passes.
Thank you. The monthly report, Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. First, I'd like to call to your attention at your stations, you have the 2016 Division Profile Highlights of our programs, teachers and students. This document was created after I was speaking to one of the left co-leadership groups and sharing with them some of the many positive things that we have going on in Portsmouth Public Schools. And it was two realtors that were taking part in that class. And one of the, what they both shared was that, "We don't know about any of this. So this will be good for us to know so that we can put that information out." Because when we start, when we, when we're trying to sell homes and property in Portsmouth, we're always sent to a certain section of the city.
Right.
So if we have these good things going on Division-wide, and with the different schools throughout the entire city, that's newsworthy to them, and those are things that they would love to know. So from that, I came back, shared this idea, talked with Ari about it, and we began to work to put this together. So we have so many print copies made, and there's also an electronic link to it as well. So we made sure that we gave some to the chamber, so they're, they have it. So we wanted to make sure that we get it out, because the realtors really were pleased to know that we could, that we were doing great things, and how could we, how could they get their hands on it? So that's where that came from. So you have a copy that we've sent to schools, any public place where we can put those, or anyone wants to see it can find it. Next, I wanted to discuss Alexis Sophia Harold Parata, who's a senior at IC Norcom High School. She is a Gates Millennium Scholar for the class of 2016. She will be attending the Naval Academy in Annapolis, Maryland for the 2016-'17 academic year. She will receive a full tuition. So we're very proud of her. That's a very, that's quite an accomplishment for Gates Millennium.
Absolutely. Is she here?
Is she here?
No. We're going, we're going to.
Like graduate.
Yeah, we're going to get her.
Oh, graduate. Well, let's give her.
Yeah.
We just found out about this, so we didn't want this to go unknown. So we will give her a chance to come and be recognized as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Churchland High School and Woodrow Wilson High School made the U.S. News and War Report top high school rankings for a second time. They were among 113 high schools in Virginia to earn bronze medals for their academic outcomes and graduation rates. So we've definitely congratulated them for that accomplishment, and both principals know, both schools know, that we're now striving to move up a notch to get that silver, and then, of course, ultimately the gold.
Right.
Also wanted to, also at your station, you will see from members of the Portsmouth Museums Foundation, they donated more than 1,300 Heart of the Harbor cookbooks to teachers, principals, assistant principals, and culinary arts students on May 18th as a token of appreciation. The cookbook was part of the foundation's capital campaign fundraising effort for the children's museum. When we first received those, we didn't know how it would go over, but Ms. Patterson, who had the board's copies, realized that that was a hot commodity, so she had to move them out of plain view, because everyone wanted to get their hands on those cookbooks. So take them home and enjoy.
Put them life to work.
And when you see anyone from the Museums Foundation, be sure to thank them.
Thank them.
The horticulture class at Churchland High School grew approximately 575 plants for their annual spring plant sale. The city purchased 200 begonias and planted them around the city.
I saw that. That was great.
Yeah. Also wanted to share that I held my second session with my parent, student, and teacher advisory forum earlier this month, had great dialogue, and always bring back valuable information to implement in our schools. And the students and parents, teachers, all were pleased with, from our first meeting, changes that have been implemented based on the dialogue that we had at our earliest session. So you always want to make sure that, if you're taking their time, that you're taking some of their concerns seriously if you're able to address those. Also want to publicly announce the 2016 graduation dates as follows. Tuesday, June 7, Churchland High School at the Portsmouth Pavilion at 7:00. Wednesday, June 8, we'll have Woodrow Wilson. Thursday, June 9, IC Norcom, all at the Portsmouth Pavilion, all at 7:00. The Public Information Officer's report is attached, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Moving right along, board members' comments. Mr. Lamb?
Yes, I just wanted to say real quick that last, it was yesterday, last evening, the PTA Council had their dinner, and I hope I don't forget anyone, so please remind me, Ms. Williams, if I forget anyone. But last night was Mayor Wright, city manager, Dr. Patton, our own Dr. Fisher, and of course, Ms. Williams and myself. It was, it was a wonderful evening. It was a full banquet room. We had music, entertainment, and what I loved seeing was that the Churchland Middle School got the President's Cup. There was just so many things that was mentioned. Their membership was up, and people were excited. But it was just a good evening to see all of this that had came together, and what community support can do with our schools. So I just want to say kudos to everyone that's been involved with it, and very much appreciative.
Very good. Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I just wanted to keep it before the board's attention that at our last full meeting at IC Norcom High School, that we had a number of parents that came forward concerning the coaching position at Churchland High School. And I just want to say that we can't ignore the voices of the parents that spoke that night. There are quite a number of them, and they were all in favor of a particular coach being placed there for a number of different reasons, which I think were very good reasons in terms of his ties at a community, his track record already in terms of coaching at the middle school level. And I just want to keep that at the forefront as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hines?
I won't be long, I promise. Dr. Bracy, Ari, this is wonderful. This is one of the things that, when we met you a year and a half ago now, I think is what it is, we started, and we, one of the things we said we wanted to do was tell our story. And one of the things that you and your team have done this year is you have put our story out there. We have a wonderful new website that is fresh, that is the highlight, that is the jealousy and the green-eyed monster comes out at times when we show it. To have this, to go to realtors, to go to doctors' offices, to go to public places for it to be out and about, because we all know that good things happen in Portsmouth. We're all here because we love Portsmouth.
Right.
And now it's getting out in print, it's getting out in word of mouth. And so it's a constant barrage of goodness that comes out. So I wanted to thank you and your team for this, and especially Ari with doing the presentation that you did a couple, two weeks ago on the whole social media bit. It was wonderful. I wanted to publicly thank you for that. Thank you for this. Your five-page report on what is going on with media is wonderful as well. So thank you, Dr. Bracy. Thank you, Ari, for what you do, because I had to put my phone on quiet several times during SOL testing these couple of weeks to keep it quiet as it goes out. So thank you.
Very good.
Gates Millennial Scholars, this is year number three in a row, I think, Norcom has had a Gates Millennial Scholar? I think so. So we need to look at that. And if they have a secret weapon over there, or somebody that helps craft and helps wordsmith these applications, maybe we can share with a couple of the other schools so that we can get a few more, because they're probably, I hate to say that there's a method to the madness, but once you find the magic, you don't want to let it go. So if we can share it a little bit. So thank you guys so much. Wonderful work. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Reverend Fleming?
On last Saturday, we celebrated the Hampton Roads Committee of 200-plus men incorporated with 200-plus scholars breakfast. We had 698 African-American males from the Hampton Roads area with 3.0 and higher, and we celebrated 57 African-American males from Portsmouth Public Schools. So I wanted to acknowledge them, because it seems like the media may have forgotten about that annual event. So I want to make sure that it is somewhere where persons can understand that African-American males do represent our districts and represent our area well. And it is exciting every year to see those young men acknowledged, as well as receiving scholarships that will take them throughout their four years in college.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
Well, I have a question related to Reverend Fleming's report. Is it possible for us to recognize any of them here at the school board meeting?
Mr. Chair?
I don't think we've done that.
Mr. Superintendent?
It's fine, yeah. I think it would be wonderful.
Okay. Thank you.
And the schools are aware of who the individuals are.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll contact the schools, and we'll have them in the June meeting?
Yes. Mr. Wiggins already has that. He's the one who coordinated that information to get it, to get to them. So we have that.
Very good. All right. One other, are there any other board reports? Your chair and your vice chair will be interviewing in June, which is coming up real soon. We do have three applicants for student representatives. So we'll be bringing to the board the student representative and an alternate. So that will be on the June board meeting. Last item is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion for approval.
Motion's been made. And second, and if there's anybody that wants to discuss it, you can stay here all night long. Meeting is now adjourned.